Good evening. My call is Tuesday, March 15th, 2016, meeting of Midtown City Council's order. If you please stand and join me in a moment meditation and I pledge allegiance to the flag. Come on in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston here. Mr. Bohannon?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Picard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here.
All right, that brings to citizen comments. I received no cards this evening, but I would like to invite Mr. Tim Abbott with Duke Energy down to the podium for a special presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Join us, Mr. Abbott.
And Kenny Cohen with Middletown Moving Forward here tonight as well. But here tonight, Duke Energy is pleased to be able to announce a major investment into Middletown Moving Forward, $500,000 to help with the gap financing effort and their fundraising efforts to help spur economic development activity and revitalization in the downtown area. As many of you know, I've been around in Middletown for almost 30 years now, worked out of our headquarters where Cincinnati State currently is located for about 15 years. Middletown has a special place in my heart. I saw the good times. We hope through this effort that other investors will step forward into the Middletown Moving Forward fundraising campaign and bring Middletown's downtown back to a very thriving core of the community. Duke Energy has always partnered in economic development throughout the region. There are other organizations doing similar work as Middletown Moving Forward, 3C DC and Over the Rhine in Cincinnati. I know Larry's familiar with them, and I serve on that board, and they have been very successful. Early on, there were a lot of naysayers, a lot of negative things that went on in Over the Rhine, but they have become a powerhouse in the economic development world. The Catalytic Fund in Northern Kentucky, very similar. Larry and I were over in Northern Kentucky at a different event a couple of weeks ago at Braxton Brewing. You guys have some concepts similar to Braxton Brewing going, being planned here in Middletown, and it is just a really dynamic and good addition to the Northern Kentucky community, and you guys can do that here. So we're pleased to be able to make our major investment, make the announcement, and hopefully we'll spur other investors and get Middletown moving forward. So if we, if you want to do a photo op, I did bring a presentation check. Mayor and council members, whoever.
Yeah, I think we could take a quick minute and maybe gather in front of the table here and get the check out there.
And I would certainly invite Kenny Cohen and Rick Pierce.
Maybe invite Mr. Cohen and Mr. Pierce down as well, too, since they're members of the Middletown Moving Forward. Get the whole gang here.
And I, and I failed to see Rick Pierce over on the other side. He's the real, the real driving force in Middletown Moving Forward, from what I understand.
Well, Tim, while folks are gathering for the picture, I'd just like to express my thanks and appreciation to Duke Energy and all the work you've done on behalf of the city, because it is a real great, you know, commitment, and I think it will do a lot to help reinvigorate the city, and certainly appreciate this lead gift and really the initiatives it'll drive and support, so.
Yeah, we're doing it because we think the leadership here in Middletown, the time is right, and it's really in your hands now, believe.
Okay. All right, let's gather up here and get the flag to the back here, so.
I'm sure I had to write them out. Yeah. Supposed to talk people back or?
No, let me do that.
Cheese.
Okay.
Okay, looks good.
All right, that's certainly some of the best comments we've had in a while. Certainly great news. Express my thanks to Duke for that commitment. With that, we can move to our city manager reports.
Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I have four items this evening. I'll try to cover them as quickly as I can. First one is we have received more information from Time Warner Cable regarding our Channel 24 options for the former TV Middletown site. As you're aware, I had talked to you at the retreat in January and presented four possible options. The first one was to discontinue television taping completely, basically just if you're not here, you don't get to see it. The second one is in-house taping of meetings, put them on the YouTube channel with or without community-based programming, abandoning Channel 24. The third one was to continue operation of Channel 24 in-house. The fourth option was to put out an RFP to tape the meetings and continue Channel 24 with somebody else doing the work. We then, at that time, we talked about using options three and four to explore further, so we then asked Time Warner to sit down with us and discuss what they felt our options were with Channel 24. I have given you all a copy of the letter, but I'm, I've got it bullet pointed up here. Their recommendation is that we abandon Channel 24 completely. They said their online streaming customers now significantly outweigh their cable customers in Middletown, and that by going to a streaming option or a YouTube type option for council meetings, anybody that had internet access would be able to continue to watch city Middletown meetings from this chamber, as opposed to the Time Warner customers who only have cable, which is less than half of the households in there. They did also say that one of the things that they never required, but that the law does require is that when you have a community access channel, it has to be, it's not substantially utilized when fewer than 40 hours of programming is done each week. And I said, well, can we just run the council's meetings over and over? And they said, no. And so they said, in their opinion, it would take at least a full-time and a part-time employee to operate Channel 24, because they would be expecting us to generate new programming throughout the time. They did talk about the fact that we would need fiber to be able to do that. We do have fiber in the building, so that is something that we could do if we wanted to, but now you're actually talking about running a TV station in-house, and I'm not sure we want to get into that. They also relayed to us that they have received no complaints to Time Warner Cable since TV Middletown ceased to operate on January 10th. With that in mind, options three and four no longer appear to be practical, given Time Warner's requirement and the FCC licensing requirements that you generate programming for that channel. Our suggestion of staff at this point is going to be that we use an RFP to get new equipment for council chambers that could stream it live on our webpage as it's, as it's going on, and then tape it at the same time, and we would immediately put that the next morning up on our YouTube channel. One of the other nice things about that is you can tell how many people are logging in and watching you stream. You can tell how many people have looked at YouTube. Would actually give us some numbers where Time Warner said they simply had no idea that when Channel 24 was on, if somebody turned it on, they never knew. They didn't have any way to track that. So at this point, I'm asking with council, be okay if we go ahead and abandon Channel 24 completely and move forward with a streaming option with new equipment that, again, would allow us to then put a taped version both on our webpage but also on YouTube, that people would have access to city council, planning commission, and we would also work this out with the school board.
Would you use someone in-house to do that, a staff person or?
Tape the meetings?
To tape the meetings?
Yes, that, we would probably just continue similar.
Continue this?
Similar to what we do now. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Atkins, just one question.
Yes.
I saw on there it was $20,000, and most of that, I would assume, is the purchasing of the equipment from TV Middletown.
Correct.
Any legacy costs that you foresee, you know?
As far as?
I mean, that's a one-time cost. Is there going to be costs that continue into the future? I assume it'll be less than $20,000 every year.
Yes. Yeah, there is some of that. And again, we're going to bid new equipment for here anyway, and this would be a chance just to make sure that we have those capacities now. Again, we're going to talk to the school district. If they want some extra bells and whistles, they can kick in some money for their bells and whistles, but we'll make sure we, we have whatever council wants for our meetings.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to move forward?
Any concerns in terms of essentially going dark on 24 and moving forward with the RFP process for updated equipment here in council chambers?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Head's nod, okay.
Second item, and we had a couple of questions on the gateway that's in the consent agenda today. I won't spend a whole lot of time on it, other than I know if council gets questions, other people have questions as well, so I just want to spend a couple of minutes on it. When I put out the RFP for this and I asked Public Works to do this, I told them to use Monroe as our beginning point, that we wanted to look basically as pristine as Monroe does most of the time when you drive by. Grass is always mowed, weeds are always pulled.
Right.
Always weed-eated and, and looking good. And so that's, and Scott told me at that time, Public Works Director said, it's going to cost you some money, and I said, well, that's, that's what we need. Go ahead and do it. So when the number came in, it was higher than I expected it to be, but it's also, he did exactly what I asked him to do, and so that is what you have before you. There are some questions about how much it does cost Monroe to do that. We did, we did call Monroe. They are contracting their maintenance out at about $35,000 to keep their interchange going. They have 10 acres. Our mowing area without, without the natural areas is 20 acres, so we have more than 20 acres, well, we have more than double the size to mow than they do, just simply because their, their highway goes under, ours goes over. There's just the configuration of the interchange. We just simply have a lot more acreage, the way ours was put together. Also, the price per acre for some of this is very high. It's at $50 an acre, because the steep hills on the very sides cannot be done with regular mowing equipment, which means to, to keep them, the grass mowed on those, you actually have to do it by hand in weed eater, which is labor-intensive and problematic. We are going to talk about over time how we can maybe put more vegetation across those, the steep areas to get out of some of that over time, but that's where we're at right now. We did have 15 companies that came out to the pre-bid meeting, only three after they saw the job even wanted to place a bid, and so you have the, the smallest bid in front of you at $56,133. Also, that contract amount does include the mulch and all the chemicals, and of course the cost for the mowing equipment and gasoline and repair costs and things like that. This is kind of where we're at. We have a couple of options. We can continue to leave it on the consent agenda tonight and let it go on as, as forward. Can move it off and put it on the motion agenda and do a little bit more work on it. We can change the scope of work, obviously, and rebid it. We can lower the standards, or we can implement this for the season, and we are working with Keep Middletown Beautiful and Public Works. We're talking about how do we, how do we do this so it looks the way we want it to look, but not have to maintain as much of it in such labor-intensive ways, but we're simply not far enough along the process at this particular moment to tell you exactly what that's going to cost and what the, then, the amount of mowing will be taken off by changing those things around. So that's kind of where we're at for tonight. Again, when you get the consent agenda, we're happy to go any direction the council would like to go.
Okay. Any questions?
Can I ask one question right there?
Yes, ma'am.
Will this be mowing only? Will there be any kind of landscaping or replacing plants that die or?
It is not replacing plants. It is putting down the mulch, the weed control, insect and disease control, fertilizer, things like that.
Right.
If something dies, we are now past the warranty period for that, and so we would have to pay for the actual plant to do that.
Would keep Middletown?
But it covers most of it.
Uh-huh. Would Jeff Michelle put in new plants? Would he add?
Jeff, that's what we're talking about.
Kind of fill in?
I talked to Jeff over the winter, and we were talking about getting with Public Works and trying to look at the, because some of those plants literally are little spiny things that catch every single straw and, and everything that comes along the highway, and how do we start over time putting those in? One of the things when I lived in Mason, I liked about their, their medians was they put in the, the high grasses, the wild grasses. You could go in and cut them back in the fall. Remodels, make everything nice, and then they grow all summer.
Come up in the spring, yeah.
You didn't have to do much with them, and then you could whack them off again at the fall. So I think some of that's, those types of questions, what do we put in that's less, less maintenance, less trash, less mowing over time.
Yes, okay.
But this is where we're at, at least for today.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Atkins?
Did we consider doing it in-house?
We didn't, only because we don't have any equipment left. When we sold Weatherwax, we don't have any mowing equipment, so we would have to not only get the manpower we got by the weed whackers and the lawn mowing equipment, things like that. We, we have not looked at that. I can. We certainly can.
No, that's fine. As I expressed in my emails, I'm just concerned at the cost and the fact that, as I said, we could put a person out there full-time at 35 bucks an hour, and they'd be working there 40 hours a week. So, you know, it just struck me that it seemed like a lot of money, and sure, a lot of that comes from the fact of the visitation that's out, vegetation that's out there.
I mean, it's. We created part of that.
Yeah, it's a problem that we need to address as we move forward. Thanks.
Any other questions in common? Are we comfortable leaving on the consent agenda?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And that's a three-year contract, right?
It is. I believe that one's a one-year contract, I believe.
The regular mowing contract?
The regular mowing is a three-year contract.
Oh, okay. Three-year period, yeah, 260.
And again, my hope would be that by the time we get to the end of this season, we have a plan on how we're going to change this away and do better, both with the look and with the maintenance of it. Third item tonight is on ordinance 26, 2016-07. That is the three-year mowing contract. We had some questions on using water funds and stormwater funds. Wanted to clarify that for the public. We do use water funds to mow, because we use those out at the treatment plant and the well field. That is a completely appropriate and ethical use of those funds. Stormwater funds are used for the mowing of city-owned retention and detention basins, and that's why those are put into those contracts as well, and I will cover that again when we get to that item. Last thing I wanted to ask you tonight is we have, I've been talking to Dr. Eisen about putting together a school board city council meeting. They have suggested April 25th, which is a Monday. I had sent out an email earlier to council asking how we should take a look at that. We could run our April 19th meeting and have a work session with the school board on the 25th, Monday evening. That may be the easiest way to do it. They're going to try to do a little business. It might be easier to get our business out of the way on the 19th, let them do their little business, and then the rest of the evening can be discussion, but it's at the pleasure of council. And I've heard, I believe from Vice Mayor Bronston and from the mayor, and they were not completely consistent, so I'm now looking for input from council. We can accommodate any way you want to go, and I'll set the final details with the superintendent, but I need a little bit of traction.
So I guess the first question, is we have conflicts on April 25th, that Monday evening meeting?
No, I don't.
And I know Ms. Bronston was concerned about missing the 19th, but.
Yeah, I'll be in Houston.
My thought was if we keep the regular meeting schedule and cadence we have, which is, I mean, I think that's typically what we operate under, and just adjourn to that meeting on the 25th, we can, yeah, we probably won't be doing any business, but as a body, we can continue to meet. It won't be a special meeting or anything like that, but it'd just be a continuation and allow us to have the dialogue with count, with the school board and have an update. Again, cuts down our regular agenda and stuff like that that we'd have to do and shortens the length of that meeting a little bit to keep things moving, so.
Is that acceptable? Then we'll continue with our normal schedule, adjourn, and then reconvene. I will get with Dr. Eisen, get the details laid out for that, and make sure I get it out to council as quickly as I can.
Okay, very good.
That's everything I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration, we have the confirmation of personnel appointments of Gary Burris, part-time wastewater treatment plant manager, Omar Herbert, Sean McIntosh, Christopher Butler, and Michael Mikowski, firefighters, to receive and file host of office for Barbara Bradley and Deborah Lindsay, and to request the approval of contract for the maintenance of the Gateway Project located at the intersection of I-75 and State Route 122 from Grounds Elite LLC of Hamilton, Ohio, in the total amount of $56,133.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for the issues and actions that's listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to council comments. Start this evening with Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everybody in case you haven't gotten out today. Today is election day. Now get out and exercise your, your right and your privilege in voting. And the only other item I had was my wife and I had the opportunity to go to First Friday. I believe that was last week. If you haven't been downtown in a while, there are so many great things going on. The businesses are packed. Come next Friday, next month, and experience some of the great events going on downtown.
Okay. Mr. Bohannon?
Oh, nothing, Mr. Moon.
Okay. Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. No comments.
All right, Ms. Bronston?
Thank you. I went to Bella's for this group of females to tie one on, and I knew that would bring a laugh, but it was about scarves and how, how to wear your scarves like ladies do in many various ways, and we want to continue to do that and bring things to some of our leaders in the community and some of the female issues that we have in training and teaching and just gathering together for fellowship. And it was quite a good time there at Beauvais, so I thought I'd mention that one. We have a number of activities coming up, one of which is the DairyCo Community Egg Hunt. That will be on Saturday, March 26th, a week from this Saturday, and it's at 2:00. We have all kinds of plastic eggs that are stuffed with candy. We have bicycles to give away. We have little goodie bags that have been donated by police and fire and various churches in the community. We have food. We have soda. We have music. Come out. It's a great time. It will be at Douglas Park, and our own city manager will be opening up with a welcome, and we're supported by Miami University and the Middletown Community Foundation. So that's coming up. Cincinnati State has a financial education seminar this Saturday, March 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and they will talk about retirement planning and investments, credit, debt, and insurance. So those of us who need to tighten up on those issues, it's available and it's free. And the last thing is the AAUW book sale, which will be at the Middletown Shopping Center, April 7th through 10th. And that concludes my comment.
All right, thank you very much. I just have a couple of things to mention, too, to follow up on Mr. Moon's comments. I heard a lot of good, good reviews, I guess it was last, it was Friday or Saturday evening, but the use of the DORA, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, was very well-received. I think folks really enjoyed that, being able to take in some music that was happening at Graeme House and then down at the Music Club, and then taking in some of the other restaurants. So that's really starting to move off, and I saw we have the signs posted outlining the areas, so I think that'll help you, you know, be a nice shot in the arm for us and the activity downtown, and I think as we get some of these newer restaurants that are coming online, there it'll help, help that and really create a nice atmosphere, and especially as we get some nicer weather, that certainly helps us well, too. So thanks to all the work that went into that by city cat, city staff and council. Lastly, just want to mention the state of the city address. I scheduled that for Tuesday, March 29th. I'm going to hold it at the Windermere Downtown here, the, the event center. It'll be at 6:00 p.m. It'll also feature an update from the school district as well. Dr. Urso is going to present on behalf of the school board, and I look forward to presenting that. I think we have a lot of good things to talk about and share, so I look forward to pulling that off, and lots to write about. I just need a good start on that, but looking forward to that. And with that, Ms. Cohen, we can move to our legislation for this evening.
Thank you, sir. There are seven items of legislation tonight. Four items we'll ask you to consider as an emergency. An ask for a motion to waive charter requirements for two readings in 30 days to enact the following items. One is ordinance number O-2016-06. Two, ordinance number O-2016-07. Three is ordinance O-2016-08. And four is ordinance O-2016-09.
I move to suspend a charter that requires two readings for resolution, excuse me, ordinance number O-2016-06, ordinance 2016-07, ordinance 2016-08, and call it as an emergency measure.
And O9.
And O9.
Thank you.
O-2016-09.
Thank you.
And call those emergency measures.
Okay, you have a second? Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
First matter is a Resolution R-2016-06, a resolution authorizing an agreement granting tax abatement to Liberty Spirits LLC for redevelopment of 1357 Central Avenue in downtown Middletown Community Reinvestment Area. This is a second reading this evening.
Okay, ready for action. Do we have motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, we had a fair bit of discussion on this last, last meeting. Any other questions or comments? I know Mr. Robinett's in the audience this evening.
Is he going to do a presentation?
He is. Do not have a presentation. He is available if you have questions.
Okay. Could I ask a question? Please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Robinett, I just wanted to ask you a question for the sake of the residents who called me, and we said that you would be at this meeting. Can you kind of give us a little idea of where we are as far as repairs and what you're doing with the property that you have there?
Sure. The project of Liberty Spirits started in earnest, actually about a year ago now. We acquired the property at 1357 Central, I think it was in July. When we acquired the property, it was in significant disrepair. I'd say similar to the property on Vale Drive or Vale Avenue. Substantial leaks from the roof, mold throughout the building. So basically, we had to gut the entire building on the inside, remove all the electric, all the plumbing, all the HVAC systems, repair the roof, and then start back over. All of that's been done. We have our, I think it's called the general building permit, so the restrooms are now back in, plumbing's back in, we have a new electrical service installed. There's still electrical plumbing work to be done. We have our state permit in terms of the distilling operation. They were very efficient. I have to give them a compliment in terms of that. The TTB permit, which is the federal permit, we applied for that back in November. There's been such an increase in the number of craft distilling permits in the country, and they evidently haven't had a corresponding increase in staffing to handle it, that originally it was about three months to get a permit. Now it's about six. We've had some correspondence from them on the permit. They had some questions. Our attorney answered those, and so we're expecting to have the, the federal permit in two to four weeks, I would guess. We're on target to open in June. We started in the 1357 building, quite honestly, recognizing that it wasn't as large of a building as you would open this kind of a business in ideally. It's about 4,000 square feet. If you do the research, typically they're about 8,000 square feet, so we spent quite a bit of time looking for locations that were larger square footage, and we really just couldn't find one. And in the middle of working on 1357 is when sort of the idea, well, maybe we could take this other building and split up the uses and get what we needed in two buildings that were close together rather than just one. I will say, in terms of the craft distilling business, I sent an email with some information. I was in a conference in Chicago a couple of weeks ago of the American Craft Distillers Association, and craft distilling has grown at about a 25% rate annually the last four years, both in terms of volume of product and dollar value of product, when the market itself's been grown at about 3% to 5% or 6%. itself's been growing at about 3% to 5% or 6%. So it's an emerging, growing industry, but it's a new industry in terms of, you know, there's a lot of learning still going on as the industry's evolving. I think it'll be a good business for downtown. These businesses tend to either be out in a rural area, on a farm or somewhere, or in an urban area. You don't find them typically in suburbs. I guess, I don't know if that gives you, you know, all the information you're looking for, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Sure, yeah. It's a growing business. We welcome you downtown.
Thank you.
And you're in the DORA area, and so it'll be expanding, and I think it's a great thing.
Thanks.
But thank you for your response.
No problem.
Any other questions from Mr. Robinett?
I understand that this is really contingent upon legislation pending at the state level. Has that been passed, maybe?
No, I mean...
Do you have a feeling on where it's going?
The business isn't contingent on legislation passing at the state level. There is legislation that's been introduced that we are optimistic is going to move through that will increase the quantity of product that you can produce and still be a craft distiller. Right now, in state law, you can do 10,000 proof gallons a year. The proposed legislation would change that to 200,000 proof gallons a year. The other change is craft wineries, I don't think they call them craft wineries, but craft breweries and wineries in Ohio can have a bar and serve drinks in their establishment. Under the current law, craft distiller cannot do that, and so in this legislation, there's also authorization to do that, which has been a very effective element for craft distillers in other states, in particular Indiana, which, of course, joins us, but...
Anything else from Mr. Robinett? Kim, thank you. Appreciate you coming out this evening. And we have our motion or second, another discussion or comments?
I have a question for Mr. Atkins. This only pertains to the Central Avenue property. This in no way impacts Vale?
Correct. Vale was a completely different... We gave him that for a dollar with some obligations to renovate it within a certain...
Abatement doesn't apply to that property in partials.
This is a building that he bought on his own. This is all part of the CRA, the Community Reinvestment Area that was enacted in 2010. The purpose of that area is to get development into buildings. Even so, with no disrespect to Mike, it's less whether or not he makes it, but the fact that he put the building back into play so that even if he goes out, he's fixed the plumbing, he's fixed the roof, he's put the investment into the building so that any business now can utilize that building. That's been one of the problems we've had downtown, is so many of the buildings have sat vacant for so long that everything is run down on them. And so it's tough to... It's one thing to open your business, and it's another when you've got to put another 50 grand in it just to be able to get it to where you could use it before you can even get to your business plan. So that's the purpose of the CRA area and why we invite that for this type of operation.
Okay, so what we just discussed was the fact that this is on the Central Avenue store, not on the Vale property.
Correct.
So there's not going to be a tax abatement on the Vale property?
There's no tax abatement of any kind on the Vale property.
Kim? All right, with that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
No.
Okay, the next matter will be...
Motion carries. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Cohen.
Next matter will be ordinance number O-2016-06, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to the contract with Birch Hydro Inc. for the disposal of biosolids from the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Kim, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The wastewater treatment plant produces biosolids on a daily basis that need to be removed from the plant. We initiated a contract with Birch Hydro to call away our Class A biosolids. It's a higher grade. I don't know what a biosolid is, but it's a higher grade than Class B, which has a different, more expensive disposal method. We have been in negotiations with the Ohio EPA to get our permit, which allows us to have Class A products. We have not completed that yet, and so I need to amend this contract to allow them to haul away our Class B solids until we get our license, and then they'll go back to the normal contract that we have put in place. This is, again, just a temporary measure, but I need it to allow us to pay the higher rate until we can get our permit leveled out.
Kim, any questions from Mr. Atkins? All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Number three will be ordinance number O-2016-07, an ordinance authorizing contracts for grounds maintenance for the three-year period from 2016 through and including 2018 and declaring an emergency.
And do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. We have various properties that need to be mowed throughout the season, and we put out a bid for that. We've done that now on this thing. We've actually grouped them into six different areas so that different contractors could bid on different areas. We took the cheapest of each area, and that is before you for consideration tonight. This would include the city buildings, city parks, medians, right-of-ways, retention and water, the well fields. Bids were taken for a three-year contract from 2016 to 2018. Total contract amount per year is $974,595. Forty-three percent of that will be coming out of the general fund, 47% out of the auto and gas tax, 4% out of the water fund, and 6% out of the stormwater. You do have the bidding sheet, I believe, was attached.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Atkins, comments, or discussion? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Number four is ordinance number O-2016-08, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with BSM Middletown LLC, aka Baker Story McDonald Properties, and waiving water and sewer tap-in fees and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. In order to assist the town mall owners with redevelopment of that property, we are requesting at this time to waive the tap-in fees for the Buffalo Wild Wings and Aspen Dental project that is getting ready to start at the mall, at the outlot. Because the enterprise zone accrues to the property owner, the waiver of the tap fees can be provided directly to the tenant in this situation. This will result in a $4.4 million project. The property taxes from that are not being waived. They will go directly into the new mall TIF, which you put together. The new $1.2 million in payroll that is designed to come out of the two Aspen Dental and the Buffalo Wild Wings would generate $21,000 in income tax in the first year. Again, there's no income tax abatements put in place for this project, just the waiver of the tap-in fees of $16,800. We are in preliminary discussions with the developer on the next outlot. Once we get Buffalo Wild Wings and Aspen Dental, we would like to get off on a good foot and get this project rolling, number one. And number two, hopefully line up a second one right as they get done with that one.
Very good. Any questions from Mr. Atkins? Okay, I'll note for the record, we have the updated emergency legislation in front of us that included just a correction in the name. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It includes the aka Baker Story McDonald Properties.
Right, okay.
Effectively, that was to make sure we noted the correct division of the company.
Okay. With that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next matter will be number five, ordinance 2016-09, an ordinance amending the pay and benefits ordinance, ordinance number O-2015-62, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Atkins?
Your Honor, this is repairing a typo in the pay and benefits ordinance for this year. The seasonal mowing supervisor position was put in at a rate of $12 per hour. We had actually been paying $12.49 for the past several years. The correct amount in the budget was at $12.61 an hour. We had bid that out, not bid that out, but checked again what other communities are paying. That seems to be a competitive wage, and we would ask you to amend the pay and benefits ordinance to allow us to pay $12.61 per hour for that position for this year.
Okay, any questions or comments from Mr. Atkins? All right, with that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next matter will be number six, ordinance O-2016-10, an ordinance authorizing a contract